Good evening. I'd like to call to order this Gilbert Town Council Study Session for June 18th, 2024. We have one item on our agenda this evening, discussion and presentation on mayor and council annual salary, and council commitments, assignments, and reports. I see Rob Boer stepping up to the podium. Rob?
Hello, Mayor and Council. So tonight's going to be a tag-team effort between me and Nathan Williams with the people team. So we're just going to provide some background information to help guide your discussion related to council compensation. We'll go over several issues, including historical data, cost of living info, and discuss some comparative data throughout the state and the region, and then discuss potential options for your discussion tonight. Above all else, hopefully, we can answer any questions you might have along the way. But just to kick it off here, I thought we might want to start with... Do I need to do something? Oh, there it goes. Did I do that, or did somebody else do that? Yeah, you did it, I think.
Can I just make sure it's on? Sorry.
Are you doing that?
I think so. You're not right. Sorry, Rob. We apologize.
Okay, so we already went through kind of what the presentation tonight will entail. Thought we might want to start out with kind of what parameters you're acting under. In other words, what laws at both the local and state level regulate or, you know, provide a framework for what decisions you're able to make and how you're able to make them. So the Arizona Supreme Court has weighed in and determined that the section that deals with this in the Arizona Constitution definitely specifies that all members of a council or a different type of board that perform essentially the same duties all need to be compensated at an equal amount. So in our case, that would mean all of council would be determined to essentially be doing the same responsibilities and would need to be compensated equally. The mayor is determined to be at a different level of responsibility, so therefore does not need to be at an equal compensation level with the rest of council. So we'll get back, a little bit back into that. But just first, to touch on our local town code here, it basically just says that we will, in fact, comply with that, with that section of the Arizona Constitution, and that any resolution of the council provided that... will provide that the compensation of any elected official will not be increased or decreased except in conformance with those provisions. And then similarly, Arizona State Statute deals a little bit with this as well, and just states that the common council made by ordinance or resolution prescribe a daily compensation or salary to be paid to the mayor, councilman, and administrative board members for their performance of official duties. So in our case, I guess what we determine that to mean, when you have a council like ours with staggered terms, all of our council needs to basically adjust compensation at the same time. So it would occur at the beginning of a new regular term of any council member. So in other words, in January following an election cycle. So for us, that means that change in compensation for council members could occur no more frequently than every two years. And then an important point is, it actually couldn't occur any more frequently than every four years for the mayor. So like I said, the change would occur in January following the election year. Council members who are at the middle of their term, when a change in compensation goes into effect in January following the election year, must receive the same change in compensation as the newly elected members. So to put it in today's terms, if we were to approve a change in compensation for council members prior to the end of this year, the end of 2024, the earliest it could go into effect is January 25. Otherwise, it could go into effect January 2027 or January of any odd number of year thereafter. And then, of course, like we said, council members who are in the midterm when that change in compensation occurs receive the same change in compensation as those newly elected members. For the mayor, any change in compensation could only occur every four years or at the start of their term, so January 2025 or January 2029. And then, wanted to get a little bit into, I'm sure you all could touch on this a lot better than I could, but to look at the different roles and responsibilities in your roles as elected officials for the town of Gilbert. And just to lay out a little bit of what that means on a daily, weekly, you know, monthly, annual basis, as far as what different types of... different categories of responsibilities are there for you, and, you know, the different things that you can choose to be busy with as far as your prioritization of responsibilities. So obviously, with your role as the policymakers for the town of Gilbert, as you all know, where Arizona's cities and towns are under the council manager form of government. And of course, that means that you all set the policy, and the manager, Patrick, in our case, and all of our staff underneath Patrick carry out that policy on a day-to-day basis, right? So you, as council, wanted to start with kind of the formal duties that are part of that policymaking responsibility. So these include really the regular meetings, the public meetings, and the public action that you take that are part of that policy formation. So obviously, attending these regular meetings, study sessions, all of the public meetings related to town business. And then a big piece of that, of course, is on your own time, ahead of time, reviewing those packets of information and the material related to those meetings. Of course, you all appoint our community members to the various boards and commissions. And then individual council members also serve liaison assignments to some of those boards and commissions as well. And then, of course, over time, you've created subcommittees on different issues, different topics. And then those council members that are part of that subcommittee, also part of their responsibilities is attending those meetings and being prepared with the information related to that subcommittee. Then just some of the other responsibilities that go with the role. Of course, within Town Hall, obviously, we always want to keep you up to speed on different issues that are facing the town and different topics that are coming up. And as you know, we often want to brief you and, you know, have meetings with you on an individual or group basis to make sure that you're up to speed on some of those issues. And of course, important meetings with community leaders or business leaders or just constituents about issues that they're facing or efforts or initiatives that they might be a part of or you want them to be a part of. Of course, the sky's the limit as far as how many of those types of things you want to take on. Events, of course, being a local elected official comes with a lot of ribbon cuttings and local community events. A lot of groups and organizations ask you to take on speaking engagements, especially the mayor, I know, is asked to do a lot of those types of things. And then, of course, conferences, trainings, and informational events. We do, as you all know, we do things like the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference, as well as some other conferences and trainings to make sure that you're aware of kind of different things going on in local government and how to kind of best tackle your roles. And then finally, many members of the public may or may not be aware of the many different organizations throughout the... excuse me, throughout the region and throughout the state that the town belongs to where either the mayor or a council representative often serves as that liaison or that delegate to those organizations, which often make governing decisions in different subject areas. Just to list off a few of these, again, not an exhaustive list, but Maricopa Association of Governments, MAG. They're probably most well-known for their planning, long-term planning in transportation, but they also actually cover a lot of different subject areas, including domestic violence, our regional 911 program, and more than a handful, building code changes, things along those lines. So we look to you all to serve on those different committees that make the regional decisions in those different subject areas. Similar to Valley Metro, which is the long-term planning organization dealing with transit in the region. AMWA, Arizona Municipal Water Uses Association, same thing, deals with local water policy. Greater Phoenix Economic Council, economic development opportunities at the local level. Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority here in Gilbert is an important partner of ours, and mayor serves on that board. And then, obviously, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, which you touched on, the mayor serves on that executive committee, and others of you have been relatively active with them, going to different trainings and informational events as well. And then, of course, the local Gilbert Chamber of Commerce and being involved with all of their tasks. So just a high-level overview of kind of what the responsibilities and different activities that are out there that you all are, that are expected of you in your role. So then, we're just going to look a little bit at historical information in Gilbert related to council compensation and salary. And I know, I believe we shared some of this with you ahead of time, but just wanted to look at, this slide here just kind of shows you a good overview of the last 15 years. And I think that what's going to kind of stand out here is there hasn't been a significant amount of change over that time. As you can see, back in fiscal year 09, the salaries were $37,822 annually for the mayor, $21,012 for the council. That council pay rate is actually the same today, and the mayor is just slightly higher at $43,631. Just to kind of touch real quickly on kind of how that sort of transpired over those years. Back in 2005, there was a resolution that increased mayor and council salaries to $36,000 for the mayor and $20,000 for council. At that same time, they also adopted an ordinance that would set... that would set council salaries to increase each year that there was a... that town staff received a cost of living increase, and elected official salaries would increase at that same percentage. So over time, that percentage around, well, 2017 resulted in... the salaries had gotten up to $43,631 for the mayor and $24,000 and change for council. And then, at that point in 2017, that was when the council at the time determined that they didn't want, that they weren't interested in having that automatic increase that was attached to those colas. So they repealed the ordinance that created that increase. And then later that year, ended up lowering the council salary back to the level that it was prior to that 2007 increase. So they put the council salary back to the $21,012 from 2017 and chose to keep the mayor's salary at the $43,631. So that's where we've been since that time. And I believe those were my slides and my information. I can be available for any questions, and I think Nathan's coming up next to cover some other information.
Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Anderson, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to share with you. And thank you, Rob, for providing a little bit of statute and historical context. I'm going to take you through much of the kind of market-based benchmarking and the kind of compensation factors that we work with internally to maybe help guiding a decision that you might feel compelled to make. So first off, just a quick kind of snapshot of how we leverage or use CPI or Consumer Price Index data when we are looking at market conditions, inflationary conditions, things of that nature. I will point out that we use what's referred to as our local market CPI, which is basically Phoenix Metro. So they call it, the federal government calls it Phoenix Mesa-Scottsdale Metro, but it's basically the Greater Phoenix area. And while there's some, obviously, there's some big numbers, as we all know, there were some major inflationary pressures and impacts that occurred the last couple of years. If you look, the average still comes out to about 2.79% annually over this 15-year trajectory. And that's only relevant for some of the context I'll provide you a little further on. So we can kind of talk present state for your current compensation. We're going to talk a little bit about what we refer to as the fully-loaded compensation component. And then I'll also talk through the market data that we were able to gather. So fully-loaded, as many of you may know, but I'll share this being a public meeting. When we talk about fully-loaded, we're talking about the full cost of an employee or, in this case, an elected official. There are costs, obviously, that goes into employing someone beyond just their pay rate, and I'll outline those here. And I'm going to kind of talk you through them. So although there may be something that stands out as really interesting on this document, allow me to get there before you focus too much on it, because I want to walk you through kind of line by line. So in this case, we're looking at a member of council, not the mayor's salary, but just for the point of an example, this is the salary currently of a member of our council. Beyond that, we have percentage-based costs to the town. So these are a variety of factors. Social Security, Medicare, right, those standard things that employer pays in to... whether it be the federal government or whether it be to manage other costs that may be incurred to employ an employee. Now, again, you're going to see, there's a big number there that I'm going to jump to in just a second. But I'll come back to it. So the next thing we would look at, and I know it's up to each of you independently if you choose to participate in our healthcare and our dental programs. But obviously, I think it's important to show the possible costs that could be incurred or how we basically budget for an employee or a position in the organization. So we obviously take into consideration the town cost or contributions to health and dental. And in this case, we typically use our more, our broader health plan, which would be our preferred plan, and we do it on the family tier to make sure that we are making good financial decisions and we're kind of budgeting for the higher-cost scenario. So that's what this number means. Now, I want to refer back to this, what may stand out, this 70-plus percentage contribution. So that is, as many of you may know, the elected official retirement program is managed by PSPRS, which is the Public Safety Retirement Program. This is a contribution that all cities, all municipalities have to make for each elected official to basically pay back past pensionary expenditures. So this is not a cost that is incurred because of you, if that helps. That is a cost that is being paid per elected official to manage the past financial commitments of PSPRS to their pension program. That number will change year over year. We anticipate, as they catch that fund up, that number will shrink significantly. So while it looks like a kind of a crazy sticker shock number, that isn't a number that really represents any cost that you are incurring to the organization. I will point out that that number already is slated to drop to 46% in the upcoming fiscal year because PSPRS is obviously catching up that retirement pension fund for past elected officials. And so, as you can see, and I didn't circle this one, but you can see the far-right number at the top. In this scenario, this shows that the fully-loaded cost of a council member for the town of Gilbert comes out to just over $57,000 a year. Now, again, it's important to keep in mind that 70% of your salary number is being paid into PSPRS and really isn't something you're incurring or, you know, a consequence of you being in your seat. But wanted to give you the full picture of what we would refer to as the fully-loaded cost. Next, I want to take you through what we look at when we talk about market or benchmark data, excuse me. And I labeled it state because we do, we did factor Tucson into the consideration when we wanted to provide all this information to you. With it being the second-largest city in the state, we wanted to make sure you had that information in front of you while... oh, and I'm sorry, I realize now that I shared a table that doesn't share all the salary data. That is a mistake on my part. I copied and pasted the wrong table. So we can make sure we provide an update that's got those cells filled in. I'm sorry. But the gist is, and what I want to show you on this is, this is comparable to how we do our salary and pay benchmarking for our workforce. We go and we look at what we would refer to as benchmark cities. Normally, those are metro-Phoenix cities that will then go and determine, you know, based on their data, how do we identify our salary ranges and midpoints? And I've provided you some averages down there at the bottom, but I am a little skeptical that these averages are correct now that I realize this table that I shared with you doesn't have everything indicated on it. But no matter, this is all referred back to in a summary slide to come. So you've seen this one before. We shared this with you at the council retreat several months back. There was several kind of comparison or approaches we could use if we wanted to look at comparative salary data. You can see on there, we talked about looking at Maricopa County cities and coming up with average data based on that selection of cities. We talked about basing it on a salary-per-resident number or basically a resident population count number. We talked about looking at seven biggest cities, including Gilbert. And then we talked about pulling Gilbert out and looking at the six biggest cities that remain. So there's a variety of ways you can kind of approach the salary data, and I just wanted to refer you back to that. Now, when we talk about kind of future considerations, and again, I'm going to summarize a lot of what I've shown you in these upcoming slides. So if you feel like I'm moving fast or I'm brushing past the numbers, they'll be, I'll refer back to them. But you're welcome to ask me to back up to anything you'd like to as well. So when we look at the, you know, if, I'm going to kind of break this down. This slide is kind of, if you wanted to make, take action to propose a change to salaries at a future date, this is kind of the adjustment scenarios that I think are feasible or possible based on the data. You've got your current salary for mayor and council there. Next, you have, if we were to basically go back in time and say, had you gotten that 2.79% annually in CPI increases, where would that put you today? So that's what the salary data is in that second section. The third is, again, like I showed before, if we were to say, well, the six biggest cities, taking Gilbert out of the mix, what does that make our averages? The next would be, if we just looked at all the 10 cities that I shared with you, what would be the average? Another consideration we thought would be good to present would be the most comparable five cities around, as far as population is concerned. So that would be Chandler, Glendale, Scottsdale, Peoria, and Tempe. Those are kind of the most comparable population sizes. And if we looked at their salaries and averaged them, that would give you those numbers. If we based it on the population of Gilbert calculation, that's what's next. And then lastly, I know council member Torgerson had presented the idea of anchoring to our lowest-paid, salaried, full-time employee in the town. And then I think I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought there was mention of, that would be the council recommendation, and then the mayor might be 1.3 multiplier to that. So that's what I presented to you here would be, if you basically did a 30% increase for the mayor in comparison to those, that council salary number. The next slide is future kind of considerations. So this is if you wanted to entertain different scenarios for how you would manage mayor and council salaries into the future. And I've just put a few ideas here, again, that I think align well with our compensation and our benchmarking approach internally and also align with some of the questions that some of you have raised throughout this process. So the first one is, while Rob pointed out that we can't necessarily put an annual increase in place without changing a statute or an ordinance, we could basically treat an increase kind of along the lines of an annual increase based on historical CPI data. So again, I would lean on that number, that 2.79% historical CPI average we've seen. And if you wanted to say, every eligible two years for our council, we're going to basically double that number for two years, right? So we're going to do 5.58% for our council members, and then we're going to quadruple that number for the mayor because it's on a four-year cycle, and make it 11.16% every four years in alignment with that CPI data. That's an option. Another option could be, you could look at another kind of market-based or kind of... of inflationary-based variable. So, staff could certainly, we could look at a shorter-term trend, we could look at future trends, we could try to make assessments and bring proposals to each of you in, in council meetings in the future, to show you the data that we're seeing, and, 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 you know, present it to you accordingly. We could look at biannual increases for our council members, or, or four-year increases for the mayor, based on town-wide benchmarking data. So, we benchmark our, all of our positions across the town every two years, and obviously, those positions move based on the market. So, we could, we could basically look at the two years of benchmark data, and then present that to you, and say, what's the average movement we're seeing within the organization? And would you like to sort of anchor your, you know, the council and mayor salaries to that same type of movement? And then another scenario, obviously, is we could just continue to look at cities, right? In, in our, whether it be the state, whether it be our, our benchmark kind of market, and we could say, well, what are we seeing as far as mayor and council pay within those cities? We could do that on a regularly occurring cycle, and present that data to all of you for a determination. Do you want to continue to kind of meet a midpoint number like we do with, with staff salaries, or some other variable like that? So, those are kind of, like I said, those are kind of the two, I wanted to kind of present those two summary slides for you, that's got the kind of current scenarios or considerations, and then sort of future considerations for you. And I'll pause there and ask if you'd like Rob to come up.
Because you don't want to answer any questions, Nathan, just kidding.
Or we can answer together.
You're all dressed up to answer questions at the podium. Any questions for Nathan or Rob at this time?
Or I can go back to anything, if you want to refer back to anything.
Councilmember Von Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Robert, Rob, I promise I'm not going to put you on the spot. Just a couple of questions for you. In our fall retreat, we spoke about this, correct?
Correct, Mayor, councilmember.
I just want to get the facade of us hijacking and throwing this in at the last second totally out of the conversation. In November 21st, updated December 1st, '23, the Gilbert Sun Times did an article called "Town Council, Gilbert Town Council to Discuss Its Annual Pay Rate." And in it, it said, quote, "A majority of the council recently gave the green light to hold a formal discussion," unquote. My guess is you'll agree that the majority of us said we wanted to continue to speak about that.
Councilmember, you're talking about at the retreat in November?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to assume that the majority of us also thought that this was going to be worked on during the year. So I'm not going to put you on the spot, and I'm not going to say, where did you get direction that said to, to not continue speaking about this? But from what I believe, five of us wanted to move ahead and, and speak about this. So, to say that we blindsided everybody the other night, to me, is not fair. It's not, it's not right. And that's not on you, Rob. I'm just, I'm just making a statement. If we went back to 2009, and we looked at council salary was 21,12, and we looked at the average home price in Gilbert, Arizona at the time was $220,000, so it's roughly 10%. To throw in some more figures at you, if our average home price right now in Gilbert is $586,000, that would put our salary at about $58,600, and I agree, that's probably a little, a little on the high side. But when I talked the other night, I spoke about the makeup of this council, and how it would be great to open this up to the average person. And so, let's use the topic of, let's go back in time a little bit. Let's say I wanted to be on this council, and I had, I had full custody of my infant son since he was six months old, and I needed a babysitter. Right now, the average cost of a babysitter is $17.73 per hour. Council meetings alone would cost me $2,127. Retreats would cost me $1,063, and estimated meetings throughout the year would be $5,800, which is a total of almost $12,000. Without taxes, will bring me down to $15,000. So I would actually make $4,000 for the full year, making this job very, very impossible for someone of lower means, or a single mom with, with a kid. To me, you know, again, I spoke the other night, getting a raise isn't going to affect my lifestyle whatsoever, but this isn't about me, it's about people that follow me. I mean, Nathan, as a, as a human resource person, do you think it's fair for a single mom to make $4,000 a year?
No, sir. I would say no to that.
Thank you. I don't even mean to put you guys on the spot. I just wanted to clear up some notions that were out there, that, that this was done in the middle of the night, secretly, 25 hours before the meeting. Well, the five of us thought that this was moving forward, and that's why we had to bring it up at the last second. Somehow, it stopped. I know, I don't care how it was stopped. I'm not going to ask anyone on this council, if they told you to stop. I'm not going to ask you, who told you to stop? But it was stopped, and so it wasn't a sneak attack. And I just want to bring that out, and I'm kind of in a little feisty mood tonight, so I don't want to take it out on you guys, but thank you for your hard work with coming up with these numbers for us.
Other questions for Rob and Nathan at this time?
I'm sure I have some, I just can't come up with the words.
Then we would have to bring it back to the council for discussion, because our only options at this point are ask staff questions, or bring it back to the council for discussion. I don't want to leave them standing there if...
We can bring them back.
Okay. Guys, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We'll bring it up to the dais for discussion. Would anyone like to begin? Councilmember Torki?
Thank you. I was prepared to just let the silence go on, but that's not in my nature, so. First, I think I mentioned at the last meeting that I didn't know there was a consensus, and I wish that somebody would have come to me and expressed that, because I would have helped to try to get a conversation. I do believe that we had some conversations about the pay, the training pay and all of that at one time during the study session, and that might have been a good time to bring this up. So, my concern is that we need to get a, we need to understand that a little better, so that, again, if I would have known, perhaps, when I saw that, I would have made sure that that was posted correctly, so I, I, I want to work on that together, that if anybody feels that they had a consensus and weren't heard at any meeting, or it wasn't brought back, I'd like to know, just so I can help bring that back. Because I don't think that was, at least in my mind, it was never, let's not ever talk about it, it just wasn't my priority, so I didn't track it. So for that, I apologize. But, I think that, I appreciate all the information, because we really haven't had that, all of this. It does help me if I, if I can get it in writing, at least, so that I'm not writing all these numbers down, so that I can have conversations with you later. But, so, I think maybe that was why it was felt like it came in at the last minute, because I wasn't expecting it, and I, I can't speak for others, so that, that would be my only comment with that. But, I think, as I mentioned, I'm not opposed to having the conversation about the value of a council member's time and leadership experience, expected to make high-level policy decisions for this community. But I, I still feel it's the time spent as a town council member, that it's about community service, and not about ensuring a salary commensurate with a career. I think we, we talked a little bit last meeting, and quite frankly, I believe that the amount of time spent to be a good council member, and there is a difference between someone who might just want to sit up here and be a good council member, varies, depending on the depth of knowledge, on critical, the critical issues where council's decisions are going to be required. Thirty, forty hours a week I spend and put into this position was based on my own decision and desire to directly be involved in key policies, projects, managing some of the unprecedented number of ethics complaints, maybe some of the infighting that was going on in community unrest. So that was my decision to get really deep into those things. And, if I had kept my time devoted to only the issues before the dais, I could probably have easily done so with a very part-time position. Now, I'm saying that because I've been involved in council meetings and decision, not the decisions, but the behind-the-scenes stuff for 30 years. So maybe that puts me in a different position than new council members. But, I think, at our last meeting, I, and I think some others, were just a little offended, I think, by the direction the conversation went, when it was relayed that the only reason we want a pay raise is to, to consider it, is to ensure quality candidates run for council. And I believe in my heart that the comments were not meant to convey that those sitting on the dais today, or yesterday, were not quality candidates. But unfortunately, I think some people may have taken that. And that's why I say, I know that wasn't the intent, but I think maybe it came across that way, and I just wanted to share that. So, in regards to that, I just want to share, for the record, that we have had many qualified and outstanding council members who have served with full-time jobs, running their own businesses, and still made important decisions during rough times, to move our community forward. And this was all before we had the hybrid virtual work options that we have today. These had to be in-person meetings, and so I'm just going to name some people, and by the way, I'm not leaving anybody out on purpose, so I just want you to know that. So if your names are not mentioned, it's not because of anything other than I was just going quickly. So just, I know we have an hour and a half, so I get, I get my time, thank you. I'll just go down the list, and some of these are a long time ago, but I've been involved for 30 years, so I guess I'm going to name some names. But, so Les Presma, I don't know if he had 12 or 16 years, so I just apologize for that, on the council, while working for SRP in Phoenix. Dave Crozier, 16 years while working for APS, and most of that time was out at Palo Verde Nuclear on the other side of Buckeye. Larry Morrison, 16 years while he traveled for work on a regular basis. Steve Urey, 16 years while owning his own business. Linda Abbott, eight years while teaching high school. So I wanted to bring up the fact that we have had a high school, a, a school teacher. Joe Albright, eight years while managing her own business. Cynthia Dunham worked full-time, cared for aging parents, and was mayor as well. Joan Kruger worked full-time and traveled for work. Jen Daniels worked part-time and raised four small children. Amy Yentis worked full-time and raised three small children. Scott September worked full-time and traveled for work. Jan Kaprowski owns her own business, raising two small children and travels for work. Jordan Ray, nine years, worked full-time, traveled, and raised five small children. John Sense, a veteran retired and a small business owner. I was racking my brains, there is only a, a few, been a few retired council members. Don Skousen, me, and Scott. And each of us put in decades of community service before we ran. And so, it's not just about being retired, it's about the community service that went into it, and it's about the time that we're willing to put into it. I, I just don't feel that the argument that we left at the last meeting, that, about money for future candidates is a good argument for this discussion. I'd say, sorry, I didn't read that right, got carried away.
That's an awful lot of stuff, yeah.
Well, I know, and I've got a lot to say about it.
All right, we're going to be here all night then, okay.
That's all right. Well, you guys had a chance, I waited.
I know, but I'm just looking at this printed sheet you're reading from, it's long.
Well, it is. So, anyway, I think that there was a comment made, that the people on this dais moved on to other positions because they weren't making enough money. And so I just want to address that, because I believe they realized that they were vested in a retirement system, and a, and getting a government job meant they continued to be vested, and that was good retirement planning on their part. I don't believe that $10,000 to $30,000 more would have kept them here. They had other plans for their family when it came to it. I've had exactly one person contact me to tell me they could not run because of the money, but I've had dozens, and it's only been this past year or two, I can tell you more over the years, that came to me and said they could not afford the amount of time required to be a good council member. The time away from their family was number one, and they don't want to have themselves or their family subjected to the threats or the negative campaigning we have seen here in Gilbert over the last several elections, is a very close number two reason why they're not running. These are people who have put in the time to be engaged and learn about the processes and priorities within the town through various boards, commissions, other activities. Now, those are concerns I'd like us to address. How can we make the time more reasonable, so people can participate and still keep their jobs? I've worked tirelessly with the staff to enhance the onboarding process for council members, to help with that exhaustive transition period that you have all experienced, and I have as well. And I'm sure there's other ways to help bring council members up to speed, to limit the amount of time that they have away from their daily work. Raising the pay does nothing to make up for the hours needed to do your day job. Unless you're a commission-based employee, or, or that's your profession, you may have a little more leeway in your time. And it allows, those types of jobs allows more flexibilities and hours in a position that cannot take time off for daytime meetings. I will tell you, Linda Abbott had to miss a lot of daytime meetings because she was a teacher. She had to get caught up at night. As a reminder, all council candidates are given the pay information before running, and no one that I'm aware of has made that their campaign theme. They knew it coming in. So, where does it leave us? Today, we have to look at, is there going to be an increase in the future? And what does that look like? I'll save those comments for the actual decision-making. But, the one thing that I do want to say is that, at this point, every candidate running today knows, and every sitting council member, has the knowledge of the pay that we have today. And if we are honest with the public, and say, this is not about us, then if we're going to do any pay increase, it should be for 2027, when everybody up here is going to run again, and they can use that as their platform. We have a tight budget, the fact that we've had to raise rates significantly for our residents and businesses to cover costs, and the fact that each of us agreed to the salary when we accepted this position. It is a very bad look, and the public is upset about it. And those running, as I said, this year, they, they don't have that decision. So, if we're gonna do a pay raise, it needs to be 2027, if the argument is truly to get good candidates to run. If that is not the argument, and we want to give ourselves a raise, which the mayor and I will be exempt from, but our, give ourselves a raise, we need to be very honest with the public and say that. If we're going to put it out for 2026, we're giving ourselves a raise because we believe we deserve it, and those who will be leaving, and those who were before, didn't have the same value that we have today. And I, that offends me. Again, I don't mind having the conversation, I don't even mind being honest and saying, I, my time is valuable, I don't mind having that conversation. But I don't want to have a conversation that says, we're doing it for the future, but we're going to take advantage of it. I, I don't like that conversation, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, councilmember. Councilmember Torgeson?
First, can't talk to you due to...
First, can't talk to you due to open meeting laws. You know that. So to say that nobody brought it to your attention, if I've talked to two people, I can't, and you know that. So no, no, you know that. You know that there's open meeting law problems with that. But the concern goes back to what Chuck said. If we want to go back to people that are of means, being the ones that can run, we can do that. We want to talk Constitution. Let's go back to 17, you know, 89 or whatever, and let's talk, oh, rich white landowners. There you go. Oh, and mail. So bringing all these things into context, there's certainly, there's time spent for community service. Certainly there is. I've done that also. I volunteered on boards here for years. In fact, 10 years ago, in fact, 10 years ago, I did run and viciously attacked, to the point where people were, I don't even want to say what they were saying, my wife did. And it was ridiculous. Currently, I am still getting my house vandalized. So to say that I don't put up with it, or there's not a cost outside of that, there certainly is. People don't want to run because they're attacked, people don't want to run because there's vitriol in this community where you get, again, somebody's dropping paint on my house with a freaking drone. It's ridiculous. The, speaking directly is now considered offensive. I believe that people that are offended make their own choice to be offended about that, because I want to speak clearly indirectly, so it doesn't bother me. But when you're talking about predecessors, whether it be Linda Abbott or Dave Crozier, some of who've had some horrible names, like No Show attached to them, these people didn't put in enough time. That's how we got stuck back then with the Zinke Land deal. Nobody bothered to check an appraisal for $57 million because they were part-timing it, and that was 20 years ago. People like John Lewis come to my office. John did say he left for pay. He did. Eddie Cook, in my office last week, laughed. He goes, well, certainly a lot better going to $77,000 a year, which is what he did. Steve Urie, at my office the week before, saying the same thing, that you guys need to do something because you're missing too many people. You don't cast a wide enough net. Steve Berman, again, in my office just last week, same thing. The longest-serving mayor of this town is Ed, said the same thing. So to sit there and say, oh, no, it's not, you can't do this well, and read every one of these things and do everything part-time. You want to sit there and say that you can? You can't. People have done it. Everybody here, especially the people that served before us, have said they've watched people that didn't read the packet. So if we want to continue to have people that don't read the packet, that don't put in the time, this is what we do. We put it out there that you put yourself open for the attacks, you put yourself open for vandalism of your home. Do all those things, and you will continue to get that part-time. I'm committed to doing the job right. It takes a lot of time. But I've already heard one person say, well, I only consider it a part-time job. Great. This is what I'm going to get? A part-time guy? Fantastic. That's what I need. Somebody that's not read into this. Unfortunately, I wanted this handled before this so that we had a wider pool, which we don't have. We did not luck out this time and have a wide enough pool. There may be some great people there. I'm not discounting them before they sit. It's not fair. I'm not even endorsing a single person publicly. So that's where that goes. But when you sit, tight budget, well, you guys added another $80,000 charity. Guess what? The people that paid that money into that general fund, they don't get to write it off on their taxes. We decided we were going to give more charity out of that tight budget. Was that brought up in advance? No, it wasn't brought up in advance. It was just done on the dais. So we have issues like this where there's, it goes both ways, Kathy. When you look at saying, oh, well, our water rates went up, that's an enterprise fund. That has nothing to do with any of this. You know that. Why would you even say that? It's disingenuous to say that. So when we're giving the money away to charity, and we're doing these things, and these people do not have a say in where it goes, they don't get to write it off, yet we're going to talk about what people may or may not experience. We wasted more money on ethics complaints, we wasted more money on mediation, we wasted more money on First Amendment lawsuits. It's absolutely ridiculous, some of the stuff this council has done. And we need to have people that come in full-time when our last two mayors left, and it was over money. That's scary.
Sure. Yes.
Thank you. I was, I appreciate your passion. I do. I was giving examples, and you have your opinion, I have mine, on those, so we'll agree to disagree on some of that stuff. But my point and my bottom line is, if this is truly about making sure we have candidates that are going to be able to afford the time and get the money for the future, it's too late for 2026, then 2027 is the date that we should be making this effective. That's my point. And all of that, I was addressing some of the comments that were made last time, and so, again, we'll agree to disagree with it. But that's my bottom line. If this is truly for the future, that's the date. If you guys come up and you say you want 2026, you're saying you deserve a raise, not that we're trying to get qualified candidates to run. So that's my bottom line. The rest of this, you and I can have disagreements on different funding sources, but that's my bottom line on that.
Thank you. Council member Bon Giovanni?
Thank you. Council member Tilk, you know I have the utmost respect for you, and I'm going to totally miss you after you're off this dais. But to worry about the appearance of things, let's face it, four of us may run again in 2026, one, two, three, or all four of us are going to win. Are we voting ourselves a raise? We are. Whether we're doing it in 2026, or whether we're doing it next year, we still are. The odds of one of us losing is pretty slim. I've never seen it happen before. When a leader makes a decision, they take the consequences of that decision, and they also take the benefits of that decision. If a consequence of a decision is, people are angry with me and I don't get reelected, even if I decide to run again, that's my cross to bear, and that's my consequence for making any decision I make on this dais. I'm not going to make a decision for an appearance. If I'm making a decision hoping that people forget about it by 2027, I don't want to be that kind of politician, and I don't want to, I don't want anyone up here that's going to vote only because they're fearful that they may, they may lose if they vote on something. I want people to vote from the heart and not be fearful of if I do this vote, people are going to get mad at me and they won't, they won't, they won't elect me, reelect me again. It's, the appearance, it doesn't make sense to me, and again, it's, I genuinely use the word, it's disingenuous. It's trying to be politically correct. If we believe that this should be adjusted, then it should be adjusted. We don't want to wait till later. Not because we have to, I don't need the money, but it's because it's a decision that you make as a leader. You don't want to just put it off in hopes that people forget about it, because that's disingenuous. That really is. I'd rather have them say, you know what, Chuck, two years ago, you voted yourself a raise, and I'm mad at you, and I'm not going to vote for you again. Right? I'd rather that happened to me than have them forget about it, you know, and be like, well, we won't mention it again, and maybe people will forget about it and they'll vote for me. I, to me, it's all about decisions. You make a decision, you suffer the consequences, and that's it. There's nothing more about that. I'm not going to try to fool anybody by having them maybe forget about it. Hell, I'll even remind them in two years and hold that to me if I decide to ever run again for this thing.
Would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you. I have the same feelings, Chuck, about you, so, but I don't mind having conversations and have disagreements. Again, the conversation coming from those who put this on the agenda has been solely on future candidates. That's what I don't think is transparent, and that's what I'm trying to get to. I'm saying, I don't, I don't like voting myself a raise in the midst of other things. That's my decision, whether I'm going to do that or not. But I want us to be very honest with the public, that this isn't, this is about people who, on this dais, who support this raise, believe that they deserve a raise, and that's what this is about, and by the way, we will get good candidates in the future. That's what I want, to be transparent to the public. I don't want it to seem like we're really doing this for the future, but, oh, gosh, we get to take advantage of it, because I don't think that's transparent. And so as long as we are having a conversation that the public understands that that's really what we're doing, giving ourselves a raise for the next two years, and hoping that the next set of candidates that come forward will fill the pay is more value. I'm okay having that conversation, okay? I just want to make it clear. That's, that's my point.
Council member Torgerson?
Let's go back just six months, when we were asking for this to be considered, and people were filing to run for office, just six months ago. Somehow it got tanked, somehow people were told there wasn't a consensus. It would have done exactly what we were attempting to do. But then, because it gets pushed, because some people say, oh, there's no consensus, someone's gotten someone's ear and pushes it back. My initial thought on it was great. I didn't understand there was a parity rule for council members, because on a state level, it doesn't exist. My attorney and another one looked at it and said, nope, you know, it will only go to the newly elected, then we find out because of a certain council in another part of the state, there is a parity rule. That's fine. But had this been done just six months ago, we wouldn't be having the same conversation. It should have happened more than six months ago, but because people somewhere wanted to let this go aside, it's not where it should be. It should have happened months and months and months ago, when it could have, when it was in the paper. But did it happen? No. Did we get to accomplish what we tried to accomplish? No. So no matter what, if it had passed six months ago, because of parity, guess what? Everybody'd get a raise. That wasn't the intent of it. But at this point, I am completely tired of dealing with whatever is going on around here that prevents conversations from going correctly, prevents things from hitting when they should, when discussion should happen when they should. We should have done this a long time ago. We'd still get accused of it. I'm going to get accused of so many things, I'm going to be the guy that takes the bullet. And to be frank, I don't think I'm going to run again, because I get people that say they're my friends, that don't participate at all, and all of a sudden, they're blowing me up over stuff they don't even know about. I'm tired of it already. So I don't care if I take a bullet or not anymore. I got cornered last night by 20 people on misinformation about redevelopment. So I don't care anymore. But the fact is, is that when we have a consensus to have discussions and they don't happen, this is the kind of mess we get. So I don't care. I will bear every slinging arrow, whether it goes '27, '25, or yesterday. I don't care. I am not going to be pushed into anything when I have simply tried to do the right thing to open this up, and somehow it got sabotaged.
Council member Buckley?
I don't really, I don't have too many comments, because I think they've all been said here. And I agree with everything that Chuck said. I was, I was a little bit offended by some of the things that Kathy mentioned, but I'm not going to go there, because I don't think this is the place to do that. You know, you keep bringing up, for new council members coming in, we actually have four people that are running for council right now, who will be coming in and would benefit by this as well. It is, it would not be just us. It will take effect for the new members that come in in 2026, or 2025, '26?
Five.
Five. Yeah, I started saying, Kathy kept saying '26, so that's why I thought I was wrong.
I think you're speaking to the election date, '26. The next election is '26.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I just wanted to bring that up. And also, I know Kathy had mentioned that, you know, that she and Scott were retired, and some, you know, other council members, but, you know, I think the thing that bothered me most, that she did not mention council member Bon Giovanni, council member Torgerson, nor myself, who all run our own businesses. And it takes a lot of time to run a business. And, and we all, I don't know about any of you guys, but my, my morning starts at 5:00 a.m. every day, and if I'm in bed by midnight, I'm just like, oh, yay! Because that's my day, to make sure that I do this, and I want to be a good council member. I want to do everything right. I read everything, I analyze stuff, I do all the right things, and it is a full-time job. I don't care what anybody says, it's a full-time job. So I am fortunate that I'm a real estate broker, I can make my own schedule, but just because I can do that doesn't mean I don't, because I work hard every single day. And I work all day Saturday and all day Sunday, and I can't remember when I had a day off. And so I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, everyone on this dais, and the mayor as well, I mean, she puts in, she puts in more hours than probably I do, working two jobs. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to say about that. And I, I feel, you know, not happy that this all got delayed, and I wasn't particularly happy with the way it got presented. And, and I'm sorry for that, Jim, because I think, I think that it got presented the way it did because we couldn't get any attention any other way.
Council member Bon Giovanni?
Yeah, I want to agree with council member Torgerson, and I didn't think about this, Jim, but you were right. If this was taken care of when we brought it up, this wouldn't even be an issue right now. 100%. The other thing is, you know, people made comments before that, you know, service is a privilege, and it is. It's an honor, and then we should, we should do it for free. Well, and they brought up the school board. The school board is probably the most partisan board created ever for any government. And, and when I, nothing against people running for school boards, but when they don't, when they want to run for free, to me, there's a hidden agenda there. And so I don't, I don't believe that, that people who serve should serve for free just because there's, there's too many potentials of hidden agendas. And I don't plan anyone to make it a career out of being on council, but they shouldn't go negative, being, being on council. They shouldn't, they should be able to at least do a good job and work the hours they need to work. And we are, we are eliminating, again, a certain number of people from doing that by not raising this. And again, reality is, you make a decision, you make a decision. You don't kick it down the can and hope people forget.
Just a quick comment. I appreciate the presentation by the staff. That's the purpose of a study session, is to receive data, and I thought that's what we were doing here tonight, is to receive data from them so that we could have vigorous debate at a public hearing, which is to be determined. So I look forward to continuing that debate in a public forum, when the public is here and can hear it as a public hearing. and can hear it as a public hearing.
That'll that'll be in about an hour and a half whenever we get to this topic on the agenda. Councilmember Buckley, thank you for your comments about how much time I put into this position. I've actually had two full days off recently, which doesn't happen often. I know. I know. I thought I would add that because I knew you would say you were jealous. But Councilmember Tilke, you hit on so many points that I had made for notes for myself, which was to kind of go through a list of the council members and what they've done for a living over the years because I think it was important to talk about the quality of people that we have had serving this community because I think that it was really missed at the last meeting and even myself. I don't think that I covered it well. And Linda Abbott was a full time teacher and couldn't necessarily do the liaison positions during the day, but took on things at night. So you make those adjustments. And they didn't have retreats on weekdays. They had retreats on weeknights and weekends. You and I have sat at them out of town, in town, on weeknights and weekends to make sure that people didn't have to miss their full time job positions so that they didn't have to take time off for their full time job positions. And the only person I couldn't remember was what did Mike Evans do for a living? Oh, he's a school teacher too. And I was thinking that, but I for the life of me, I could not remember what Mike did for a living. And Jared Taylor works at a charter school, so he's busy during school hours also. And so we have had a great quality of council members and mayors over the years. And yes, they have left for different reasons. And yes, some might have been for a little bit more money because also they had a different retirement system that that pushed them into that. And Councilmember Torgeson, we talked about one of those recently that did just that. We are not in that system. I think I was the first new council member in twenty fifteen that came in under the new system that it really doesn't behoove you to go to a different position. Obviously, if you make more money in the in an elected position, more is going to go into your retirement and that's another benefit that you get from the community as part of your full compensation. But I had a few slides, June. Could you bring my slides up, please? Because I because this has become such a topic and because I think all of you know one of my pet peeves is that I think the first thing I taught talked to the new council members about was RSVPing for events and being at events. And if you're going to RSVP, being there and if we're if we are going to be if we are going to be talking about increasing pay, I think there's a need to be a little bit more accountable to the community for that also. And the Queen Creek Council actually on their agenda, when they do their report outs, which we do at the end of our meetings, they do at the beginning of their meetings, right after proclamations, they do committee reports and that is a report out on everything that the council has attended. June, can you go to the next slide? And this is what they show. And council members sent this to me after they watched our last meeting because they thought that it might be helpful. A Queen Creek Council member. They report out all of the other events that and meetings that mayor and council have attended over the month. And if something strikes their fancy, they can say, hey, I went to G-PAC and I learned this by going to G-PAC and share it with the community and with the rest of the council. So I had Kirsten go back and and create May and up until yesterday in June for the Gilbert Town Council. June, can you go to the next slide? This is May. I wanted the public to see that this isn't a part time job for most of the people sitting up here. It is quite a service and a lot of time that people give to this position. And I wanted to offer this to the council as a possibility of something that we do for for report outs from the council and maybe we adjust our agenda again and move those to the beginning of the meeting because the beginning of the meeting is when you actually have public in the room. So when you get to do your, okay, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, this is a joke, so don't take it personally, your narrator voice at the end and you do community, you know, you do your report outs, right? That there's people in the room to actually hear what you're reporting. It just does not count town it does count town council meetings.
No, but meetings that we have with staff.
It doesn't it doesn't count briefings that you do with staff. Those would be a lot harder to track and even this is hard to track. And because of the fact that I just mentioned, which was a lot of times people RSVP for things, but they don't attend. So it's hard to keep track of. So we would need some sort of a mechanism that you reported back to Monica or Taylor that you actually attended this event. So when we went through, I did a lot of this. Kirsten did the work and then I did some from memory and she checked with Taylor and with Monica to fill in some gaps. But if you look at this list and all the things we tried to include, our executive sessions, board and council interviews, that's all council, all council, all council. There's Higley School Board meeting attended by Councilmember Buckley, Chandler by Chandler Board meeting by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, all the things that we are assigned to. Next slide, please, June. This was the rest of May. But, you know, as you can see, my name's up there a lot because I don't sleep when I unless I have two days off, which is unusual. And then we went into June. June, if you could go to the June, June. Thank you, June. And this was for June up until last night, that six of us were in an executive session for two hours last evening. And I don't even include the time on here for for the public to see the amount of time that mayor and council spends in these positions. All of council at an executive session on June third. If I put the time down there, we started at four thirty and I think I got home at nine ten PM. And that was our annual evaluations for our four employees, three sitting over there and our judge. Executive session the next night before for other items that we had to discuss before our next council meeting. And then the other things are a lot of assignments that we do during the day. Mag domestic violence is a liaison position for Councilmember Tilke that she does during the day. And she's right, we have had the benefit of now things can be done virtually. So we don't always have to drive. Today, for example, my mag transportation policy committee meeting was changed from yesterday to today, but I had Phoenix Mesa Gateway at nine this morning and didn't have time to drive down to downtown Phoenix. So I was able to do TPC virtually from my home before I had three more meetings tonight. So we do have that advantage now. But I liked the idea that Queen Creek threw out and I wanted to offer it up to you because again, I do think that there is a misnomer and I've heard that from this council that there's it doesn't take a lot of time. Councilmember Torgeson, you've said it, I don't know how many times, not what you were told, not what you were told to expect. Am I right? Am I?
Oh, you are.
Okay.
By the same people that say it's a part time job.
Right. And so but but another thing that I think I told the three of you when you were new council member too is you do this position to the level that you choose to do this position to. It's not the same for everybody. Councilmember Tilke. They do and they've had that, though. And I don't want it to come out like we are being negative to the people that have served before us or that anybody on this dais, the current people sitting on this dais feel that their time is more valuable than the people that have served before. I know that you've said that people don't read their packets. I know that people have said that I don't read my packet. Do I miss things? Absolutely. Sometimes we have three thousand page packets tonight. Ours is what, twenty two, twenty seven hundred pages? Thank you. So sometimes you misalign. Sometimes you don't get to see everything. Sometimes I get interrupted ten times as I'm trying to read the packet that I'm trying to read for the next meeting. And I have a lot of assignments, nineteen, I think, that I'm trying to keep track of on the thank goodness for staff because of that. But my point is if you want to be shown to be accountable to the community, you have to show the community what you're doing. And so thank you to Kirsten for going through the effort of putting this together to show tonight at this evening. I'm going to feel the same way as I do and I think it's more of a philosophical feeling. I understand what you're saying about an increase in pay and I understand your reasons for discussing the increase in pay. I do not think it should go to the level that was recommended two weeks ago. I think that that is way more than anybody in this community should be expecting to pay the members that are sitting on this dais. And and again, it's a it might be a philosophical difference. Do I think that people should get paid nothing? No, and I said that two weeks ago. I do not think people should get paid nothing and I know that there are former council members that feel that way and I've had this discussion with them on this dais. It's not something that I believe, but we will move into the next part of this discussion during our public hearing this evening. So we need to be prepared with what that looks like. I just want everybody to keep in mind, if you increase the pay, it increases the amount the town has to pay into your retirement. It increases every level of everything and that compensation, the final compensation that Nathan showed tonight gets larger and larger and larger. When I look at my compensation online as mayor and I don't take the health insurance because I choose not to cost this community extra money, mine's over eighty thousand dollars for compensation between my salary of forty three thousand, what the town pays into the health into the retirement system and I have a car allowance that I have for driving my personal vehicle to all of the events that I go to, which you can see on the list there. And so it's a much bigger picture and that's what I was concerned with at the last discussion was that we were only focused on the pay, but there's a lot more that goes into that discussion. And that's what I wanted to have and that's why I asked for the full compensation to be discussed tonight. Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Yes. I just want it noted that today is June eighteenth at six sixteen PM and I absolutely agree with you on putting in putting down to the public, telling them, letting them letting them know exactly what we do every single day. So thank you for that and I agree with you on that.
Thank you. I think another level of that that this council is going to need to discuss and it's sort of a budget conversation, but it's more of a tracking of the budget conversation. If we are RSVPing to RSVPing to attend events that are paid and we don't show up, how are we going to track that and what is this council going to do about that? And I just want you to let that simmer, right? Because I think it's something that this council needs to discuss. And again, it is us costing the community money, no matter what and no matter where it comes out of. It is us costing the community money. And that would go along with if you if you agree and like this, then that would go along with your reporting back that you did attend this, let Monica know. If you RSVPed, were you there? And and sometimes, you know, Taylor will be there. Sometimes Monica will be there. Other council members will be there and it can be a shared joint effort. But again, for the community to see what goes on in this position and to be completely transparent with that, I like this idea. Okay. Any other comments, questions, discussion, or does everybody want to end this and recess before we come back in nine minutes? Okay, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.